Yeah. So then we gotta refresh our thing.
Hey Bob, hungry?
All right, today is June ninth, two thousand twenty-five. Chukwem County Board of Supervisors, we're, I will call it the intervening row call. We have supervisor Brightback, supervisor Sylensby, supervisor Hackman in the room present. Supervisor Carter on phone today and supervisor Sukho is absent along with board secretary Shirosekleton. Is our motion approved today's agenda June?
Motion.
Motion by Steve, second by Scott to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? If not, roll call Steve.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Jake, aye. Motion carried four zero, absent of Travis. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from June second as presented to the board?
Motion.
Motion by Steve, second by Scott to approve the minutes from June second. Any discussion on the minutes?
I'm wondering if there should be a little correction on the bid for lawnmower for conservation. It says John Deere, a couple of places, should we go instead of here? In both those?
Yeah.
Okay, so what we did to do?
No, you're right. Because we did call Ziegler and Red Power. Good. So yeah, if you could change the two locations, let's say John Deere to bonus signer. You okay with that, that's even, Scott, with those changes?
There's no correction.
Yeah. All right, we do a roll call, Steve?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Isaac?
Aye.
Jake, aye, absent Sukho, motion is carried four to zero. Anybody have a committee assignment?
Any, uh, we just had a response. We, Thursday. We just, real status real quickly, we approved the treasures report. We had paid a couple bills, ultimate safety for O two sensor and blast tech for fleet line of glass replacement. Had an update on training, equipment update, we voted to purchase a new model. We elected a new treasurer, Aaron Goodenbow Power from Greener County, he will be the new treasurer. Review the insurance for fiscal year twenty-six.
That was about it? Thank you. Steve, Isaac, did you have any committee assignment?
I did not.
Perfect. Uh, nine oh five, I don't think we saw anything for public comment. Moving on to Sheriff Ryan Schaubert, good morning.
Good morning.
Discuss the agreement with Axon for the new tasers.
Yeah, so we've got a brand new, new agreement for new tasers. So currently we have what they're called X twos. They don't make this model anymore and we got one that went bad, sent it in, thought they'd repair it, they do not. And we cannot purchase this model anymore. So with Axon, tasers, only one company makes tasers, that's Axon, you can't go anywhere else. So kind of got under barrel a little bit, over barrel, whatever you want to talk, whatever you want to say. So I asked them to provide us with a quote for some new ones. And this quote is, is for a five-year term. What it does is allows us to pay what we feel is comfortable upfront for the first year and then divide the years, uh, two, three, four, and five over the next four years out. So what I'm proposing to pay that, I said I'm just gonna pay the forty thousand upfront this year. Feel comfortable that my budget is still giving back a hundred thousand, it's probably more than that, but I'll probably end up giving back less, something catastrophic does happen. So feel comfortable with that. What this does is does eleven handles with batteries, cartridges. And when cartridge is used, they're going to send us a new one, no cost. If there's a warranty issue in that five-year period, we send a taser in, we send us a new one, no questions asked. This does cover all the training for all sixteen employees. Each W gets a taser, then there's one for the jail which is slash ours fair, we have the needs for that. So with taser in Axon, you've got to do training every year. This allows us the cartridges that we need every year. The batteries are rechargeable now, so they're replaceable. So that does help and they're increasing their training recommendations that we have to do. Now we've got to shoot live cartridges in a person in a suit. So we don't have those suits, so we need to purchase that. So currently how we do all of our training is we buy new cartridges, the inert cartridges, the training cartridges as we need them. So this just comes with it. It's, it's kind of a good deal, I felt comfortable doing it. Unfortunately, we've discussed upgrading our equipment since they don't make this model anymore. The problem we had with it is that they just couldn't service the one that was malfunctioning. It was nothing to do with, with use or how it was cared for. It's one of those things, threw an aircoat, sent it in, they're telling us it's not going to be able to be fixed, so. So what's the plan for this year, however, my budget supports it with also keeping true to what I thought I'd be able to get back a hundred thousand. I think it's going to be more than that, based on everything, how my figures are working out. Unless something would come up, of course, then none of us can pull receipt. So just want to let the board know, this is what we've entered into and that claim does come through the forty thousand, which is a big expense, so that's what it is. So over years, two, three, four, and five, it's about seven five hundred. I feel comfortable with that, I have my budget I've prepared for next year. That's to find that in the police supplies and then going forward, I'll just budget for that. Felt this is a good time to do this with how my budget's sitting. With so many unknowns on what the years going forward are going to look like. I know there's a lot of talk about property tax reform at the state level, what that's going to look like. A lot of indicators showing something's most likely to be done next year, we can't, we don't know. But knowing things, how tight things are, they will be forward, feel this is the right time for us to do this.
So I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
You said this company is the only place we can get, only company we can get tasers from?
Correct. Well, that's, that's nationwide for all along, of course. Taser and Axon are kind of the same company.
Other questions, how old are the?
I did not, I was around when we got them, I can't tell you how old they are, I believe.
Two thousand nineteen.
Two thousand nineteen? There you go. Yeah. And then they were not new, they were with the new model, we're bottomed that. So they do have an X seven house. We've quoted the taser tens because that's, that's the newest one, knowing that hopefully they're going to be available, you know, through this contract, if not beyond. They keep updating stuff, upgrading stuff and phase things out as they upgrade.
Well, two thousand nineteen doesn't seem that old.
It does not. Yeah, this wasn't the newest model when it came out, when this, we bought this model, they had taser sevens out. We have to believe that that's time to go with the taser X twos. So it was the newest model, I'm knowing they were probably going to phase it out as they released new ones.
Hi Ryan.
Yeah.
How old are those bird tasers that you have?
Uh, two thousand nineteen, Jake said.
Two thousand nineteen, okay.
Yeah.
What do you do with the old ones that are working?
They take them and gives, gives credit for them. Yes. And some of our jail tasers right now are a lot previous to this one. So they're older, you can't get parts for those either.
On page two of the contract or the documents, the payment summary was August of twenty-five. You would like to advance that forty thousand, like next week's claims?
Yes, they are going to give, send me updated one, this was just a quote. And they're going to send me an updated one showing July, actually June twenty-five.
So then what about the other ones? Because August of twenty-sixth, we haven't even discussed that budget yet.
I would pay it, I would ask them to have that invoice sent before June, middle of June of twenty-sixth. I pay it on my next fiscal year budget.
So the one we saw, they're going to be all Junes?
Correct.
And Ryan, basically people are not budgeting for this year, correct?
Correct, even not.
Do you have a budget for next year, for our next fiscal?
Based on what my police supplies land, where are you going to take it from, I'm comfortable with what I have in there for everybody to support that seventy-five fifteen. We just kind of have to pick and choose what we feel is important to purchase next year, is kind of how I look at it.
How much came up with the forty thousand, you just thought you could do that this year and divide the rest by plus four years?
Correct.
They're okay with paying the plan, no interest charge?
No, no interest charge.
Any covers of five-year warranty?
Yes.
Any other questions, you've seen this because of the purchase policy, I believe it's over ten thousand dollars for this claim.
I'm just going to make a comment if you guys are okay. You know, I, I understand what you upgraded with and I, I tell that. But it should be difficult for me to spend something that wasn't budgeted considering the budget touch that we just did. I, I know that it comes up, I get it, it's just going to be difficult for me to spend this money when it wasn't budgeted for.
I understand that, Isaac, can you get any questions or pushback from the public? My door is always open, I understand how this may look.
Yeah.
But we.
Yeah.
It, it's my decision that we need to start upgrading our equipment. The sooner the better, I think next year, I think we all agree it's probably going to be tighter, we can't don't know crystal ball what things are going to look like. I'm comfortable for my budget sitting after like now and still being able to give back the hundred thousand.
So with the police equipment budget, you do have enough for this forty thousand?
Not that specific, overall.
If we would recommend to push it to next year, would you have the extra twenty-three, no, thirty-three thousand?
I have to go off with doing that for next year. I, I am, I'll be the first to say I'm nervous about how my budget's going to look next year. I, I took a lot out. I wouldn't make big purchases in my budget, to turn this year because there's so many unknowns. We don't, you know, the next conversation is what happened to Howard County? That could happen here.
Is there any more discussion or is there any action on the agenda here? Uh, just a question and comment, I guess this, this came up in the federal government side, I'm not acting like the federal government. But how can we continue going out for contracts for, for financials when we haven't even discussed what the budgets look like in years ago? Just a question. If anybody knows that answer.
You mean for like the years four, five, two, three, four, five?
I have never even talked about twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine budgets and we're going to enter, you enter into a five-year contract for financial obligations. Just means the other things in your department would have to be cut if you have to make these obligation contract.
Correct, yeah, that, that decision I have to make, where, where the pork presses come out of.
I just know was brought up in the past of, we haven't even discussed the four budgets that we're talking about today.
Credit, that's not entirely uncommon. We have a contract with the private owner that you don't allocate money for for future years. Uh, Nolan certainly has contracts in his office and he has his own pool of money he reserves.
So you just have to work together and see what I have to pay and not.
I mean, I, I, I could, I feel like I would pay this whole set of thousands here, but you wouldn't be trying a thousand dollars back. The guesstimate is going to go back.
You have other things in mind to purchase, I guess, because when I look at your pool cash this morning. This budget has a Friday, then I'll use Friday numbers. You have four hundred eighty-seven thousand as a Friday.
This is the last big thing on my radar. This wasn't on the radar until about three years ago, they had to set that one in.
I just hope, and I, I know it's your money, it can be appropriated, but I hope we don't spend four hundred eighty-seven thousand in the next two weeks.
Based on my rough numbers, I'm thinking it's in excess of a hundred thousand, a hundred ten, a hundred fifteen, maybe a hundred twenty to come back.
With this forty thousand?
With this removed, correct.
Any other questions, concerns? So really, all I was asking for is if you've entered the contract pretty much, is that yes?
Correct.
So we need forty thousand authorized because of the purchase policy. Because what would it be, I guess, divided by five years, if we do not authorize to be above ten thousand?
Seventy thousand.
So you would probably seventy thousand, two, call it two hundred, if you're figuring. Divided by five. That's still fourteen thousand, so. Just throwing out ideas, but if there's some motion on the floor, we'll see where it goes.
I'll make a motion to approve the figure of Axon for the tasers. First payment in forty thousand in June of this year.
Is there a second? Oh, sorry. The motion, motion on the floor is made by Steve, second by Scott to allow the Axion Enterprise Inc. of forty thousand, June of twenty-five. And then the other four years would be seven thousand, five forty-eight and sixty-five cents for a fleet of new tasers for the sheriff's department. Isaac, did you catch that motion?
Yeah, I did, yeah.
Anybody else want to re-read or could we go? Any more discussion? If not, roll call Steve?
Aye.
Scott? Isaac?
Aye.
I'm going to say no at this time.
So we have a question, I guess, take off for you. The money you've allocated is my budget, I know you guys don't like it and I understand that, a hundred percent stand on where you're coming from. I approve this.
But the board policy states you had to get our permission first, over ten thousand dollars of purchase power. So you failed that purchase policy, in my opinion.
So we had this discussion before, so this should be new to everybody, but the state law says that once you allocate the money, it's theirs to spend. So you can add as many internal policies as you want, I consider this to be an internal policy that you want acknowledgement. That's why you always use the word acknowledge, not approve, because all you're doing is just acknowledging what they're doing. So I think a push came to shove, I think any department that according in this situation has the right to spend money that's in their account. Uh, that's already been appropriated to them regardless of what that amount is. Now as a courtesy and as your internal policy, that's your policy, I'm going to bring it forward to get acknowledgement of that, so you're aware of what they're spending on. But if I came forward and said, hey, I lost my twenty thousand dollars on IMX, and you said you didn't agree with it, I don't think you have the authority to tell me no. Despite your internal policy, I think the state law says once it's not appropriated, it's up to the department to spend that all money.
I don't know, trying to be difficult.
You know, I'll put that policy out next week because I think it should be regarded as a, but that's your opinion. We had that discussion when we did that policy. We just, we did it here a year or two ago and I think if we go back to the tapes and the minutes, I made that clear at that time. That you can have as many, that's your internal policy. Um, but I think it's a good policy because we want these discussions, but when push comes to shove.
There you go.
That's what's going to happen here.
And I'm not trying to play that push comes to shove game, I'm really not, I came here to be transparent, let's public know, yeah, I'm willing to spend this kind of money. I guess I look at it, what would the difference be if I say, hey, Axon, I'm going to buy each taser individually. It's under ten thousand dollars, I just proved it, it's true. And I'm not, I'm not trying to be difficult and, and, you know.
Move on.
See who's, who's got the bigger hat to wear.
We'll move on then, see where it goes. No, maybe we need to reopen.
Well, I, I think we need to keep on having this discussion, I don't want to have any problems here if it's approved and then.
You have the power, right?
That's what we said.
I, that's my answer, yes, and I think if we go back to the discussion we had and put this policy in place, you're too, but that's my answer then.
So today's deal two, we'll move on. Discuss and approve chair signature for a vehicle lease rental agreement between Howard County and Howard County Sheriff's Department and Chukwem County. Chukwem County Sheriff's Department, are these two together, Schaubert?
Yes.
Discuss and review insurance coverage for Howard County.
So making the paper, what happened in Howard County last week, and this is up there, all the subjects. Long story, without the details of it, they had two vehicles, one was completely totaled out by gunfire. The other one was severely damaged. I had a conversation with the sheriff, I said, you know, I've got an extra vehicle, that'd be like a loan or lease or whatever. We decided to do just to getting through the time period until I get something back, so. Just something that I thought I'd come forward to see what their thoughts were. I talked to Judy with our insurance company, she's finally made a agreement, her biggest thing was to make sure that Howard County had, had covered on it, and that's what we suffered the sights due.
Any questions on the lease agreement? Starts today, June ninth, for one dollar, for thirty months, sorry, thirty days. Continued on for, until each department decided to terminate it, is the way I read it?
Right, and if they could return it sooner if they decided they, no longer need it.
Will they put some temporary signage down to say Howard County?
It is not marked as it is, it's not, no, no, if it was marked, then.
Is there any discussion, if not, is there a motion to approve the lease agreement between Chukwem County and Howard County? Terms are spelled out for one dollar, the insurance looks like it's on ICAP's policy area, so. Is there a motion to have board chair sign off on this?
Ooh, second.
Motion by Scott, second by Steve. To approve the lease agreement between, the vehicle lease agreement, rental agreement between Howard County and Chukwem County. Authorize chair signature, anything else, any discussion? Roll call Scott.
Aye.
Steve?
Isaac?
We heard Isaac.
Yep.
Uh, Jake, aye, motion carried four zero, absent Sukho.
I can pick that up after the meeting, the Howard County chair will sign it up.
Do you have one, ready?
I have one here.
Okay, because I, I just ran this on both sides because I thought you.
Yeah, no, I got this here, then they were, they were in talk about it at their meeting as well, so.
I should have tried a person with your greatest, but I didn't do that, it was too late by time.
It's fine, it's fine. But then I'll get this to you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Right, thank you. Moving on, Conservation Director Chad Humble, Landville.
Uh, good morning. Basically, status quo there, worked with HLW, we're just going to keep that kind of that one pumping a month right now. And monitor that, that following day and then the, the, the following, that day and the following day, just to kind of see what levels we're at. We're just trying to get an idea of how much volume is filling up into that thing. So yeah, they seem to be happy with what we're getting in, I guess, at this point in time, so. We'll, I'll, when I get those next round of numbers, I'll maybe put that in an email and shoot that to you and distribute that, so. Status quo, uh, the next one is the, the timber sale for the ten acres there, the ponds. Uh, just got a couple of things here. Let's out.
Thank you.
So we had six bids submitted. Two distinct tiers there, as you can see, the top three and then the bottom three, and I haven't done one of these in the past. But according to the, the foresters and talking with some of the, the timber guys there, it, it, it basically depends on what's there for species and what their buyers are wanting, right? There's a chunk of pine out there that obviously the guesstimation is that the bottom three don't have a place to sell those pines, so. That's kind of why you get that big discrepancy from the high bid to the low bid, but they said that's kind of normal. Uh, but the six bids, excited about that. So the board obviously accepted Ken Knapp's bid for the twenty-three, six oh five. Seemed to be a pretty, pretty decent price.
What kind of array you were expecting, are you getting?
Yeah, and again, it's, I, I had no idea, but according to Mason, our forester, you know, originally he thought ten to fifteen, but then he thought if somebody was interested in that pine for like some pal, I'm terrified some of that stuff, it could be north of that, which. So I think, I, I think it's better than probably any of our expectations at this point in time, so. And, and they've already talked with Ken, we've already got the twenty-five percent down payment, signed contract, so he'll have basically the next two winters, because we want going in there when it's frozen. And then we also don't want them, we, we put a little caveat in there that we don't want them to drink shotgun one and shotgun two seasons, just obviously since we provide public hunting, we're trying not to deter from the public as much as we can, so. Um, he'll get the next two layers, most likely his intention would be to get it out this winter, that harvest the logs, but again, there's been a couple of winters rather, but we've had enough frost on the ground that we want getting in there, so. That's why there's two, two freeze cycles in that contract to give him a couple of options anyways. So yeah, I don't know if you want to, if there's anything you want to do or acknowledge that at all, but then that back page kind of goes hand in hand with that. So that forest resiliency grant that is out of that partnership with the Iowa DNR, Mason and I have been working on that. And that back page there is kind of a summary of, of things we would like to include into this grant. And if anybody wants any more individual details, I'd be happy to sit down and break it down on some maps and some stuff like that with them. But just give you a quick idea on what kind of money we're looking at spending at each of the different areas there, the different parcels. Um, this was a total of a hundred and forty-three thousand, we've reduced that down, we've taken out line two on the Gilmore WOFC, that thirty-eight thousand. So it gets the total expenditures down to a hundred and five thousand. So this would be, and before I submit this grant, I just wanted to have discussion. So this is an eighty-twenty reimbursement grant, so we need to provide twenty percent, which I feel extremely comfortable now because we just picked up that twenty percent through that timber sale. And then in part of this grant, that timber sale, if we were to get this grant, would be kind of that last phase there on the timber sale, we'd go back in to finish the clear cut and everything after the, the harvest was done. So, and, and again, unless there was some big objections on any of that stuff, my opinion from you guys is this is a reimbursement grant, so. I don't know that I can run an eighty thousand dollars through my department, right? When you get down to it, especially if that's coming out of general basic, I don't know that I can handle spending that and then trying to get that money reimbursed. I just wonder if there's a little lag, if the board of supervisors would be willing to help me out as far as the financial end of that, if, if I needed to make the big payment on something, because we all know how sometimes paperwork and some of this stuff can take a little time, so trying to get this all slammed into one budget. Get it paid and then reimbursed before I need that, if you guys would be willing to work with me on that, however that would, would, would be, or I don't know how that would, would happen or what, but. Does that make sense? So I'm not on the hook for eighty thousand, and again, it's reimbursement, so we'll get that money back, but. If there was any.
One of these countries coming better than, than the other county?
Yeah, and I, yeah, that would be great, I mean, if I could use that to take it out, put it back in, would be fantastic, I just. And I would try to do it through my budget like we've done, Sheila's, has helped me out with some of the smaller grants, you know, that fifteen we had last, fifteen thousand we had last year, we were able to kind of bring that in and get that back out or get it back in in time, but. Eighty makes me a little bit nervous to, to get it back in and make sure I don't overspend anything, because I don't want the chair giving me any phone calls, so. So if that's great and you guys don't have any objections, and again, and this isn't due till in July, so if you wanted to look at any questions, I'd be happy to come and talk to you about any of those projects, but. I will proceed with that unless there's anybody that's, has some concern about that. And thank you for that. Campgrounds are off and running, I just deposited, we're right at eighty-eight thousand, so I don't know that we can get our ninety-five out, I'm hoping for, we're going to be close, right? We've got about three weeks left, we've been. We've got about three weeks left, we've been averaging right around that, anywhere from two to three, so it's gonna be really close. Still at ninety-five if we can get there, we're at eighty-eight now, we're now at our hundred and five and hundred and three the last, excuse me, couple years. But I think things are going extremely well, and the big difference is that we didn't have that big winter project, that's kind of what filled us up there for the, the two seasons, and that's, that's my reasoning for why we're down just a little bit.
There's more of those projects coming up over north of us, maybe in the coming years we'll have.
Yeah, absolutely, and I think we have a wonderful facility there, and I think it shows, right? I mean, again, we had thirty, it was my weekend, we had thirty rigs out there during this weekend, so I mean, it's, it's continuing to get used, I hear a lot of good about it. Yeah, so we'll just keep doing what we can. So that brings me to the next thing, and we had discussed just briefly last week with some of the veteran ones, and we had like thirteen, thirteen thousand five potentially left in there for some improvements there. Just discussed real briefly. There are a few pads we would maybe want to put in, but I don't think that would be maybe till later on, we would maybe look at doing that after Labor Day season. We could close down a few of those spots and get that work done, and hopefully get upgraded and see and get everything put to bed before fall, so if you guys are okay with that, I would maybe just compromise on that a little bit. And if we, we could work on that as the summer went on. The conservation board did want me to ask and just kind of get a feeling of what you guys' thoughts were. I know we've discussed cabins in the past, and they can be a lot of work, and they can be a lot of startup expense, but would there be any interest from this board, maybe going forward, to have the conservation board and ourselves look into maybe expanding to a cabin or two? Again, and maybe, you know, this isn't the right time to have that conversation with budgets, but at the same time, wouldn't you ever have a conversation with budgets, right? I mean, we're always looking. So they wanted me to throw that out there and, and see what, if you guys have any thoughts, I mean, if it's a definite no, then, you know, we know that as well, right? So I mean, there's no point in spending time on something that we know is not going to be, or isn't in favor, so.
I think it's always something to look at. It's a revenue source. But there is time.
That would be my question, I guess, would be, you know, I don't know how many other county parks have them, what is the expense, the ongoing maintenance expense?
Right.
And are the parks that do have them, are they keeping them full?
Right, and, and, and that would be some stuff we could probably get some numbers for, if they wanted to get more serious about that. Kind of along with that discussion they had talked about. They would like to do, and myself included, is maybe some more upgrades at Split Rock Park. We spent a lot of time, a lot of money at Airport, and I know that's kind of our bread and butter there, but I think there's a lot of, there could be some value there at Split Rock. The big thing I don't know is, excuse me, is, is our infrastructure strong enough there, right? So like at Airport, we boarded two inch waterline to that side of the park, so to be able to provide some of the water that we need, the volume, and then the electrical at Split Rock, I think may need to be upgraded a little bit, but I'm not an electrician, I'm not an expert in that area. So would there be some potential there as well, maybe if we look at upgrading some of those facilities, the lead chain, I mean, I think maybe a couple seasonal spots at, at Split Rock potentially would help a revenue source as well. The problem is, is our dump stations on the top of it, you know, are pretty close to it, so unless Roman's got any magic process to make it flow uphill, you know, that could be something. Sorry, Roman, I felt like creeping up.
You don't want to.
I'll start it. Well, Marvin, I like to pick on Dave, but he's been pretty good, he's been a part of Dave, so. So yeah, just, I mean, and again, if there's any discussion or you have any thought process about that, please reach out, and, and, you know, we're just trying to, you know, what's the next step? We've had pretty good success at Airport, so they want to try and continue to help grow some of that stuff and, and look at some of that other revenue. Switching gears, Monson Park, so we've had a really good the Jacksonville historians have an individual that's been donating some funds and has been kind of helping clean that park up, and we got the new roof on the general store. So they kind of would like to, the next step, having a discussion with them is maybe doing some painting and cleaning inside the school and inside the general store. They would hire the painting done, maybe would want us, some learn, some help from us to maybe move some stuff around, which I think the school would be pretty easy to do. The general store, however, I don't know if any of you have been in there lately, but it, it's a little full and a little cluttered. So, but the question came up, so if we go in there and we go through that, is there some stuff in there that's deteriorated beyond the point where we need to get rid of it? Now, I don't remember, Jake, were you on the board when we had that? It might have been ready for me. Yeah, do you remember any of the discussions?
I heard some of it, just on the insurance side of moving though, at one point.
Right, and I was, I think that might have been my second or third year here, I mean, so we're talking like thirteen or fourteen years ago, and I know there was some stuff between the Carnegie Center, and then some stuff went to Nashua, and basically, my question is, is who do I need to get a hold of if we want to get rid of something? Is that you guys, is that a combination? I don't have.
I bet it was donated to the county bill.
Right.
Because the Nashua Historic Society, I thought.
Yep.
We insured that for many years, and we had to find that address and put insurance on that.
Yeah, yeah.
So to me, that means it's the county's.
Stuff, stuff, yes, yes.
To me, how long can you keep stuff that you can't read or see, or when it becomes ashes?
Yeah.
Whatever you want to use.
Ripped. Right. And, and that was the big thing, is, is they wanted to get the stuff that they thought was extremely perishable into a climate controlled facility, air conditioning and heat, so I, and yeah. When I started, when that was going on full, I ran the other direction, right? I knew there was plenty of places in the county and stuff for me to do, that was kind of past director, and, and I think Rick at the time was one of the ones leading the charge on that. So, yeah, I just wanted to have some discussion. I don't even know how deep into this we're gonna get, but.
It was donated and stuff, and I guess their wish is, is how long can you keep on the stuff too, that just totally falls apart?
Right, right. And, and we have this conversation amongst us too, and then I, I reached out to David maybe a couple years ago, and I never followed up with it, but I probably need to get something put together that if somebody donates a deer mount, or my daughter does an Eagle Scout project, that they sign off at the end of the day, and then you can tell me if I'm just crazy, David, because that happens from time to time, but basically, them acknowledging that we will do the best that we can, but when it comes time to drop the axe, we have full authority to, and we're gonna move forward.
It's ours now.
Yes.
We're gonna pay it to us.
Yes, so, I mean, you know, this is very touchy subject, and we have that happen with mowers and some displays and stuff like that from time to time, and it's like, you know, the kid shows up with their grandkids to show and check out, you know, granddaddy's big fish, and, you know, it just crumpled. You know, so we feel bad, you know what I mean, but like I said, that's something I probably need to reach out to you again, and maybe that way at least there's a line in the sand, but how about this, if we find, if I find some stuff that myself and the Jacksonville historians agree on, I will get a list of that and bring that back to you before we get rid of anything, does that seem fair?
And then some of us can reach out to the Nashua.
And we'll talk to Nashua, see if they've got some place that.
Or, yeah, that would be my rate for a little. That, that would be great, okay, I can do that.
Can we go back to the timber sale?
Sure.
I was thinking through all this discussion this morning. You guys manage all those parcels for the board of supervisors.
Yep.
David, does his board have the authority to sell trees on county-owned property?
I never asked that.
So Sheila says, you know, we do have the general to acknowledge the sale. But should we actually maybe potentially approve this sale?
Yeah, that's a good point. So, I mean, again, that's for David, but I don't know, look into it, I guess, my initial thought would be they're managing it for you.
They are.
It would be no different than EMS, as well, departments that are technically under your purview, but are you've delegated them some duties to do some things, so. I don't think it would be illegal. Would it make more sense if you could be the contract person or the main contact, perhaps, but but again, I, I think it goes again to what you delegated to him to.
Correct, correct, and I'm, I'm not saying, I'm not, I'm not against this, I don't think the board is either. But I'm wondering, I mean, do they have the right to sell Gilmore Wobbsey, right? Probably not, so then do they have the right to sell the trees then? Right? Because we're the owners, the board, sorry, the board is the owners of it.
Yeah.
Just a question, look into maybe down the road, but I'm wondering if we need action today, that's my bottom line. Do we need action on that item? Either as acknowledging it or approval of it?
Well, and I think I'd ask for acknowledgement at the time.
Yeah, we'll say no, and that's right.
A consensus, yeah, right, 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 like a, like a purchase agreement.
And you're fully aware, we, we knew about this for the last.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just, do we need any legal?
So it's my understanding, again, and this is just my understanding, that the chapter three fifty gives the conservation board authority to enter into contracts.
Correct.
Or, you know, and, and stuff like that, and I I don't know that you'll maybe get a clear answer, right? Because I've even had discussions with other directors, and even sometimes like, there's some, there's some places, counties, I'm going to say, that probably think that the conservation board, like, right, they put that conservation board down on the titles when they purchase or have an acquisition, whether it's the county board supervisors, I think we've always.
What I'm getting at, is we own the person.
You guys own it, and the conservation board manages it.
Yeah, so. I'm just wondering if we need to make some kind of motion to approve it, just because we do, the board does indeed own the property.
Right, and it would be, you know, I would look at it as probably like our rental, probably agreements, the crop rental. I think the conservation board has authority to go into those contracts. I think, having looked, looking at it now, that, but I think board of supervisors has kind of taken that over, right? Because of things that have gone on in the past, so it's probably your opinion or their.
Oh, is the infamous solid carbon solutions pipeline easement structure, do you recall within that contract? Was that with conservation, was that with board itself, board itself?
Yeah.
That probably the closest thing it got to the board.
Yeah.
Would be an easement on the type or needs.
Yeah.
Just because we're, we're the people.
Right. Yeah, which again, I mean, if, if, if that's, you know, the direction that we want to go, then yeah, I, again, I don't know when the next one, if we'll have another one, but.
We need to. Just approve it?
Maybe you already did, didn't you?
No, I didn't.
Oh, yeah, well, not yet.
Yeah, that's why I was stuck, because I asked a lot of the.
Oh, yeah, I think you just have approved, approve of conservation entering into the agreement for the sale of timber, I think that might be agreed.
And then going forward, if, yeah, when we, if I start out, yeah, with the discussions are like that, if you want to, I guess, switch that process, or have some sort of joint thing, we can do that as well.
Is there, you discussed it?
He did.
Six months ago, or I don't remember if we had consensus or.
We had a consensus, we had a consensus, I believe, to go up. Or bids.
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall for sure how that all went.
I think easiest to clean up is just somebody please make a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve timber sale to Ken Knapp logging company. I'll say.
Motion by Scott, second by Steve to approve the sale to the timber. Two set bidder. Twenty-three thousand, six oh five. Any discussion? Rogue call Scott.
All right.
Steve.
Hi.
Isaac.
Hi.
Jake, I motion carry four zero with the absence of Travis. Sorry, Chip.
No, no, my good day. Thank you. Um, just the last little thing is, is obviously we're mowing, cleaning parks, you know, we made it through the first holiday, we had a hard three campers that weekend, so it was a great weekend. Fifty-seven at Airport, fourth stage of Split Rock, so no major incidents. They, again, just kind of status quo, Matt's finished up field trip season, his school of wild program that he had with the fourth graders this year. And then he's, like I said, he's been shifting over one day for sure, and then depending on if we need him to help kind of clean up some of the mowing and, and keep the parks going, so. Everything's going, I think, as good as expected right now, we'll just continue to, to move along and see how things go. And then my last comment would be, is there anything else that you guys would like to see me bringing back or updating, or you know, I don't know what I don't know, so to speak, so if there's a question or an answer or something that you guys are looking for on any of this stuff, please reach out, and I will do my best to, to get back to you, so.
No, I'm good. Thanks, Chad.
Thank you, have a day.
You too. Moving on to the engineer, Roman, let's take a morning, Roman. First thing is reviewing and per permission to enter premises agreement with Shane Barlow for Chickasaw County Bridge Replacement Project L, FY twenty-six oh two, seven three dash nineteen.
So that's the first one on your, on the pile there, Jake, that's on one fiftieth east of Windsor. Last one left for that project. And that's gonna be built with our crews. That one will maybe be this construction season, if not, it'll be around this time next year, because the other project in that area is gonna be first out of the gate for us once we're ready for it, so.
And this has chairman's signature, so is there a motion to approve with that?
So, sorry.
Motion by Scott, second by Steve to approve the enter premises agreement with Shane Barlow. Any discussion, if not, the, Scott.
Hi.
Steve.
Hi.
Isaac.
Hi.
Jake, I motions carried four to zero with the absent of Travis. Next, review and approve permission to enter premises agreement with Bockey Brothers LLC for Chickasaw County Bridge Replacement Project L, FY twenty-six oh one, seven three nineteen.
Uh, so same story, different project, this one's just a little south on Windsor, south of one fiftieth with Ballack Brothers. Last one on this project as well, so I know we've had quite a few this year, but that's a good, then, I guess it means you're doing a lot of projects, so.
Is there a motion to approve with chair signature?
Some.
Motion by Steve, is there a second?
Sorry.
Second by Scott. To approve the premise to enter Bockey Brothers LLC.
Is that number one that's gonna be either in the construction season or?
This one, so once we get that, so the Altavista friends that we're gonna be replacing that we contracted with Minima, the steel suppliers on the precast culverts are having some issues, which is our problem, but it's also not our problem, they're trying to push them to get it, so we're on schedule with that July late start date. Worst case scenario, I might send our guys to Windsor, south of one fiftieth, and start that project while we're waiting. Best case scenario, we get that project on V twenty-two done, and then we move to Windsor, north of Little Turkey, probably beginning of August, mid-August. See where we get on that project, if, you know, I know we'll get that one done, but if we were to move to the one on one fiftieth east of Windsor, I don't really want to be gambling with a deck four in November, so I would rather wait till spring with that, but we'll see as the months go on. It's gonna depend where we're at on every other project as well, so. But it would be in FY twenty-six, all of these, so.
All right, any more discussion, if not, rogue call Steve.
Hi.
Scott.
Hi.
Isaac.
Hi.
Jake, I motions pass four to zero with Travis absent. Department update.
So the department update, kind of gonna summarize the last couple weeks, Contract Rock, Division Four is completed, Division One is completed. Last week, we really had to go do a shouldering project or some other variation of, not in Chickasaw, so we only had Contract Rock on Friday, which had actually worked out with our Pembroke, Pembroke project with our guys, but Division Two is about fifty percent complete, not quite. So we'll see where this week gets us, and then we'll be moving to Division One. Our guys will be starting to spread fifteen thousand of everyone, all with ourselves in the coming weeks, whenever it sees, we see fit and are able. Mowing at hard surface roads, the Northwest Quadrant was completed with Altavista days, and then what is it, Dairy Days down in Frederickburg, we got the Southeast Quadrant, it's near completion, should be done this, maybe even today. Then we'll work through the other two quadrants, that's around one of hard surface mowing. We are finally getting. Um, we are finally getting our tractor today from Bodensteiner, uh, hopefully. Um, so that'll be good to get that and get another machine mowing out, um, this week, next week. So SC nineteen fifty project, which is on Windsor as well, North Little Turkey, um, we got two railroad tankers, sets, backfilling. Today, might be open today or tomorrow, either way, it will be open this week, depending on what we get for weather. TR seven ninety-seven, which is our gradation optimization project with Michigan State and Iowa State and the Iowa Highway Research Board. Uh, our guys did a phenomenal job with that last week, um, we had about ten guys roughly on it. Uh, staff from Michigan State and Iowa State were on site, and they thought the same thing. Um, basically Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, we have a end date Tuesday, so our guys did a lot of hauling, did a great job spreading it, and I think. The product turned out very well, uh, we'll see how well it stands up to one of the busiest graddles in Iowa, but, um. Either way, they did a great job, I'll be submitting. The delta costs were approved to be covered by the research board, um, around eighteen thousand dollars. Of course, that would be a reimbursement, so we will pay it out of our budget, but that'll be reimbursed. Um, and there might be a little bit extra that we get out of that, because we had to change one section based off of the existing material, so. Uh, happy to have that one done, that's been a two and a half year project in the, in the making, so. Um, aside from that, we did get our V fifty-six tile boring completed, that was a quieter project as well. Edge running on V twenty-one, V forty-six, V fifty-seven, a lot of those roads that retrieving didn't bring enough material in, so we are hauling some fresh aggregates to those shoulders. Side crew, very busy with openings and closures, we had several soil boreings on various bridges, as well as Pembroke Avenue. Then they were also flagging for another soil boring on the Caldwell Blacktop. Shop, general repair maintenance set up, we did get our new excavator in. Cat's going to bill us, invoice us in the new fiscal year, but they just brought it, it's sitting in the shop right now. Like I said, the new tractor's coming today, hopefully, Alphamista shop project, Murphy's, I was grateful, started that last week, they seem to be doing a good job so far. Sam is working on getting a quote for sealing potentially, the shop in Fredericksburg, our portion of the roof and spray foaming it. Uh, David and I talked. I guess the lease agreement gives us some safety net, uh, and it, when I talked to Jimmy. He indicated that in the next, it sounded like few years that they will want to move, move their city shop, but I believe one of the. People that sits on their council right now is interested in buying that shop, full well knowing that we have a lease, and I think they are in agreement with keeping that lease going. So, I mean, I can do, I guess, you guys asked before to move forward with that, and we don't have the quotes yet anyways, but I guess if we. Get a quote that we like, do you want us to move forward with that, or when I do get the quote, approach you, but I guess now knowing what we know. I, I don't think, you know, Jimmy and me talked, and he said something about, I didn't know if the county would maybe want to move. Uh, the Saudi shop, you know, our Saudi shop is going to be needing rebuilding very, you know, in a few, ten years. It can barely house, you can't do much of anything in there, and parts of the foundation aren't in great shape either. It's an old building, but I didn't know if we wanted to be shifting blade routes, you know. Eli goes all the way up to Little Turkey right now, so the drive from Fredericksburg to Little Turkey, I don't think is as efficient as we are right now, so. I don't know what you guys want to do as far as when that time comes, or just keep our portion of the building for now maintained as far as not leaking.
That's out of here, anybody else have a deeper opinion?
Yeah.
Because I asked Jimmy if they wanted, you know, to be part of that, and he didn't think they had any issues with their portion of the roof, which they were built at different times, maybe. Repaired at different times, so I don't know. When I get the quotes, I'll. Probably get it approved or just let you guys know, um. So that's that. Bridge twenty-four hundred on the Caldwell Blacktop, uh, we got west pier piling, there were sixteen at thirty feet in the bedrock on that, and we poured the footing. Last Thursday, um, we're going to be pouring the stem here at noon. Which that's a seventeen foot tall pier stem, so that's going to be quite an undertaking, too. But happy to get out of that hole, hopefully we can get the east pier done this week without water becoming an issue. Um, but that project is starting to move along, bridge O two seventy on Three Hundred Street, we poured the slab, uh, the deck slab, same thing, on. Thursday as well, poured in posts, end sections on Friday, we're going to be pouring railing posts today. So concrete with that bridge will be done this week, more than likely, I would estimate, you know, roughly a month, depending on where the dirt were contractors and. Seating and erosion control stuff comes in, but they, that project's going great, our slash four one awesome. Kenwood Avenue project, of course, that was open to traffic, uh, a while ago, five twenty-one. I did send Kroll a final voucher, I received that this morning, so I will get that processed, um. Based off the numbers, it's looking like we'll have roughly thirty thousand dollars left to spend on rock in some way, shape or form, as was discussed previ- previously. Um, so Kroll did a great job on that project, uh. They got it done by the time we wanted them to, so everything worked out real good. I know we'll have a little bit left in FY twenty-six, I don't know if you guys. Want that spent on rock still, or what, you know, that interest or?
So that's the balance of the ARPA fund, will be about thirty thousand one.
And we know the balance of our budgeted for FY twenty-five.
Oh, the five twenty.
Six twenty was budgeted, so I don't know what we have, up to you guys, we can.
Addition of.
Well, and we have fifty thousand to have all through to into there.
For next year's spending, forty.
But there won't actually be fifty.
Right.
If I spend the fully allotted amount, six twenty, there won't be fifty next year.
Correct.
There'd be about eighteen or twenty or so. Okay, is that?
We only have thirty thousand to spend, fifty.
We have fifty that we budgeted, and you're saying that there's fifty here today.
Currently for FY twenty-five, after paying Kroll for Penwood, there will be thirty thousand and some change left in the budget, which we have plenty of rock bills that can be spent on.
Okay, well then.
Spent.
If you can spend it, I will spend it.
Okay. Uh, so yeah, kudos to Kroll, that was a good project, happy to get it done, um. Lot of design and development work, we had soil, three bridges get soil boreings last week, um. Contracted with EOR for thirty-five hundred dollars to do a wetland delineation on Bridge twenty-seven seventy. Which is over the Watsi, um, Caldwell Blacktop by Actresson Easterly Wildlife Area. Mentioned the TR seven nine seven project, we did some good news, uh, CHBP FY twenty-five, no fault, so. You guys are familiar that we submitted about two million dollar requests for grants on two bridges. Um, haven't found out if we're getting that yet, but got pretty good confidence that we are, it's just waiting for the press to announce it. But in the meantime, they announced a FY twenty-five CHBP, and we have eight potential candidates, and I have to submit all of that by Wednesday. Um, I strongly advise moving forward with the grant writers, this will be a joint project, but will be bundled with. Our many counties, cities, and I O D O T will have our own subsection of a bundle, hopefully it's just our two or three bridges, like the last one, which is great, because it's just easy to. Focus on your own, um. It's looking like another thirty-two and a half million dollars is going to be guaranteed to Iowa in some way, shape or form. Um, so I'm planning on submitting this, we will have approximately. I think it was ten thousand dollars, they're just estimating per structure for the grant writers. Um, our last one was about fourteen thousand, seven hundred or some for two bridges, and I'm hoping that, that it'd be less than twenty, say if we get two bridges, I hope it's less than twenty thousand dollars, but. This would be eighty percent federal funding, we would have to do a local match, whether that comes out of secondary roads budget, um, local auction sales tax. You know, the infrastructure fund or potentially TIF. Um, it'd be a small ticket item, you know, on a, could be a two million dollar bridge, we could respond to it for. Four hundred thousand dollars worth of it. So to me, if you're getting that much money, it's, it's good to invest a little in it, so. More of that will be coming, I guess, um, working with these grants and fun, but bringing extra money to the county is great, so. I'll move forward with that, just wanted to make you guys aware of it, there's, like I said, eight structures, uh, I'd say a half of them are. Very large, two million dollar plus structures, and some of them are small ones that could easily be done with day labor, um. So not sure where their rationale comes from it, but either way, money's money, so. Aside from that, I guess Kenco will be slurry leveling this week, today's not looking good for them as far as the cure tents for their. Material, but you'll probably see them tomorrow on V twenty-eight and order T seventy-six. Um, hoping they can get done. This week, next week, so we can get that last round of claims for that paid out infrastructure fund for slurry leveling. That's pretty much last few weeks in a nutshell. Prior weeks were more insane.
All right, any questions for Roman? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Treasure Matt Icebrand, morning, Matt.
Good morning.
Review and approve the twenty-eight agreement with the City of New Hampton to collect. Did Lindwick parking ticket.
That's over, the chief of police came to us and asked if we'd be willing to look into it, um. They had trouble collecting on some delinquent ones, so basically any. Parking ticket that they would deem past due, um. They would send us a spreadsheet of the person's name and plate number, we'd put a hold on the registration, and when they'd come in, we'd collect five dollar. Fee on top of the parking ticket, uh, to the city, so. I think I talked to Floyd County, they do it through the Charles City Department, uh. Conrad thought it would be. A few a month, uh, either second, true, or kind of from a normal month, so. We, we'd keep five dollars over each ticket we'd collect on.
Is the ticket vendor paying that five dollars, or is it coming out of the file?
Uh, yes, there would be an additional five dollars, so if they had a, I think he said most of the tickets were like five or ten dollars. So, yeah, if they had a five dollar parking ticket, we'd collect ten, and we'd give the city five, and we'd keep five.
Another office, like who has the issue of checks back to the city, that's just going to be a transfer back to the city immediately, or?
Uh, yeah, we'd set up something with them, we'd probably just write on the check back, so I don't know, if we just sue a claim.
So the other office.
Or whatever, and somebody to do it. We just have to set up a phone to keep, and some money going back to the city and the money we've received. I want to say Floyd County, I don't think they reimburse the city that often, I don't think it's monthly or anything, it's like quarterly or weekly.
Um, for, Dave, did you do this?
I did do this, yeah.
Fourteen A, it's only for Chickasaw County vehicles? We're not going after any other county or state?
Uh, no, because we only register, it's only, we can only control what gets registered within the county, so.
Five dollars is office, plus on top goes the general charges that the board says, so. This is all authorized by statute, so anyone listening, it's not something we create out of whole cloth, the statute allows us to do this, um, we just have never done it before, so. Chief Police approached me, and then I came to Matt, I have the details, and I put them right here.
So right now, like the Chickasaw County citizens, we got one in Charles City. We were, when they came in to register here, we kind of collect on that money, but we would tell them, hey, you have an unpaid parking ticket in Charles City. We can do with it as they will, but. We can't stop them from registering unless it's. Ticket that was issued here, we, we put the hold on it.
Yeah, I think it leaves it open to how often you want to reimburse them and those types of things, um. And given those details, it's going to leave your guys' offices to figure out how to effectuate the agreements of. As long as we got statute stuff in here, the general provisions, I think. Maybe in ten years, I think, sorry to go back.
Yeah, I think that's what you add, and then a sixty day notice if.
Got a question on the last twenty-seven. By reading this over the weekend, I saw B and C, is B and C, can you explain that, Dave, a little bit better?
Standard labels that, that we've had in all of our twenty-eighties since I started here.
But does it contradict that anything that we receive from legal counsel? And then C says, I guess whatever they said.
I think C is supposed to be so if the general, someone from the general public or one of the department heads told you something, you're not relying upon. What someone told you, you're relying upon what's in here outside from legal counsel. So for the city's portion of it, I mean, I already talked to Todd Richards, the city attorney, he's on board, I understand it wasn't last week. So I think he'll recommend the city improvement, so. Think this basically says, hey, if, uh, the city signed it, they're not relying upon what Karen, the city clerk, what county, they're saying they're relying upon what's in the document, or what the council.
And the last thing you need is a cover page, if we're going to file this with Secretary of State?
Yeah, that's she doesn't matter.
Is there any couple of questions, anybody else have a question for Matt or Dave or?
Sheila and Michelle.
Oh, I think that, okay.
I think it's a good agreement, I think it's a good idea, um, statute allows it, it seems fairly straightforward to me.
Tennessee only city that has a police department yet?
No.
The other one we patrol. Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve this twenty-eight agreement regarding vehicle registration hopes for delinquent parking tickets?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? All right. Motion by Steve, second by Scott to enter this twenty-eight agreement regarding vehicle registrations. Well, for the city, with the city. Any other questions, concerns? If not, roll call Steve.
All right.
Scott.
All right.
Isaac.
Hi.
Jake, I motion is carried four to zero with the absence of Travis. Thank you, Matt.
I did your counter question, which was in this one.
What's that?
I did your counter question, which was in this one, so you guys all sign yours. We'll get the cities out, one will be on there, just that, but that would be next year.
Go on, you want, you just sign, you go.
Is there a quick screen?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a quick wall for you.
Can I get a clean, I'll get a clean. Oh, do you have a clean one?
That's heard of yesterday.
So do you want to send that one back?
July one.
Discuss future agenda items, um. I'm, well, I believe this Friday, the RFPs are due for HR and auditing. Services, uh, we will get those put on for Monday, June sixteenth.
Kind of activation we talked about earlier with the payment of the claim.
Yeah.
Okay. We just have to outprint these, the way they authorize it. So I just want to clarify my statement, make sure we're all on the same page with this. So this must have came out a while a year ago today, um, this memo is dated June sixth, so I'm just, are we the same issue right at the end of the budget season? Um, but it addresses your authority over staffing levels as far as who gets hired and how many persons people have, and fill over the back pages as the thing for payment. Um, and you go down with the full paragraph there, it says, you guys do have the authority, which we talked about before up here. To establish the overall number of employees and determine the staffing levels in all departments, other than those departments that have it a times four, which of course, keep a good play unfortunately the last couple of months. And that last sentence says, your authority over the payment of claims is limited for approval by county departments is more limited. And it says, that's because the budget process begins when elected or appointed officials, um, or department that submit to you an estimate of those expenditures for their offices for the next fiscal year. You are required by law to quote, uh, appropriate, quote, the amounts deemed necessary for each of the different county officers and departments during the ensuing fiscal year, end quote. You also have an ongoing statutory duty throughout the year, uh, fiscal year to review and approve claims that have been, these all. claims, and these all come right out of the code. Uh, but there's no express language in there for you to independently evaluate, consider, or deny claims submitted for payment, simply because you disagree with the amount or character of the claim. There's no language for that. Um, in fact, the only language addressing that issue, uh, says basically that, uh, you must prohibit claims if, quote, an expenditure is the sum of the official's department's larger than the amount which is inappropriate, as the spending ordinance in there, and for any, quote, expenditure from county fund in excess of or equal to the public revenues, um, for that fiscal year plus that spending amount. So basically, the code says you can't approve a claim if there's not money in it, which obviously makes sense, but the code does not address your authority to deny claims. So to read that last paragraph, my conclusion back then a year ago was that you exercise a significant control over the budgets prior to the adoption of the budget, and that you control how much each is appropriate to each department. But your authority is, and I think the word there is quote significantly curtail, once the budget is final, as you are not allowed exercising further control of particular expenditures, so long as, again, um, it's for a legitimate public purpose and does not exceed the amount which is inappropriate in budget, and you generally must approve this claim. Now, there's a caveat to that. Footnote fourteen, um, footnote fourteen references another code section that is a list of duties that you are expressly required to do. Uh, in my opinion, is if you're required to do them, I think you have some authority over how that money is spent or how it's done. Um, and that list does include several items with respect to the sheriff's office, I'm looking at whoever's sitting here. That includes vehicle, we had a discussion before, so in my opinion, I think if the sheriff came in and said, hey, or any department, excuse me, just the sheriff, because it references him, uh, I want to buy a new vehicle, I think since it's your obligation to buy those vehicles, I think you do have some say in that as to whether or not that gets approved. That section does also talk about his rights under, I think it's six ninety point two, which restricts fingerprints, his obligation to that, and the third one is uniforms. Uniforms does not reference any weapons or anything else. It actually talks about neckties and, and outfits, those types of things, and badges. Um, so I think anything dealing with those three items, the sheriff's office in particular, I think you would retain some authority to tell him, hey, uh, we're not going to approve this, or we want to see this done differently. Um, but in general, for things that are not listed in that code section, which would include all the other departments other than the sheriff's office, uh, I don't think you have the authority, um, to say no, so long as it's for a public purpose and so long as it's within their budget. And again, if you have a internal policy, if you want them to come forward to get it acknowledged, and that's why I specifically use that word, acknowledge, not approve. So I don't think my opinion's changed. Um, again, this must have came out about a year ago. This one I'm almost triggering, so I love you guys helping out. Happy to address it between now and the department meeting or anytime in the future if you have any questions. I just want to clarify my position.
And you wanted this plea to be agreed back after it was signed?
Uh, I can have it, yeah. We'll have to get the city's copy, then I'll get you the final copy.
Okay. And then I'll leave the cover on there when I have the final copy.
Perfect. Okay, I'll.
Anything else for future agenda items? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Let's take a second. Sir. Second, motion by Steve, second by Scott to adjourn at point fourteen, all in fear to say hi.
Hi.
Hi, anybody opposed? Motion carried forward zero with the absence of Travis. Thank you.